Connected to the internet.
We will call this meeting to order, May sixth, two thousand and twenty five. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Hey, good morning, everyone. We do have a quorum present this morning with all five commissioners in attendance. First order of business is the approval of the agenda, commissioners. We did have a slight change that we will need to amend. A request came in late last week, I believe it was on Friday, maybe even before the weekend. But anyway, we need to add a letter of support to Congresswoman Hagaman regarding some potential legislation for the Rock Springs RMP. Eric has passed out a copy of that to you all this morning, so you should have it in front of you. And we will place that under tab C in the action presentation items. That'll be first up, so we'll just call that one A. And then we'll proceed on with one B and the rest of the action items there. So unless there's any questions in regards to that, I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Jones. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Toman. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed nay. Motion's unanimous. Moving right along into tab A, we've got a public hearing this morning for a budget amendment, resolution twenty five oh five C L O one to increase the fiscal year twenty five Title twenty five operating budget. And with us this morning is Accounting Specialist Rebecca Romero. Morning.
Good morning. Um, yes, this budgeted amendment is to increase the Title twenty five budget by seventy five thousand dollars. We're running a little bit short to pay a current bill, and we estimate that we may need this to get through the next couple months.
Very good. Any questions on the budget amendment commissioners? Not, we do need to open this up for a public hearing. This time, if there's anyone online or in the audience would like to speak to this amendment, now would be the appropriate time. Seeing and hearing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
I was gonna make it, just closed out on me though.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Richards.
Move to approve resolution twenty five oh five C L zero one budget amendment to increase the fiscal year twenty five Title twenty five operating budget.
Do you have a motion to approve by Commissioner Richards? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Slaughter. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed nay. Motion's unanimous. Thanks, Rebecca.
Thank you.
We'll see you a little later. It's gonna move us right along into the county resident comments and concerns portion of the agenda. At this time, if there's anyone online or in the audience that would like to address the governing body, now is the appropriate time. Good morning.
Good morning. Oops, I don't know if you can hear me. Good morning. I just wanted to introduce myself. I'm with University of Wyoming Extension. So you now have an extension educator in Sweetwater County. So my name is Natasha Holtmeyer. If you haven't met me, I'll be here through this and after. I'm not sure if you have closed session after, but I'll be here if you would like to meet me and talk. Hopefully, we can, you know, become good friends, I guess.
Welcome aboard. Thanks for coming over and introducing yourself, and congratulations on the new role. We look forward to working together with you. Any questions or comments, commissioners? You're getting off easy today.
I know.
Think we're good.
Thanks.
Gonna say, Mr. Chairman, just a quick comment. You know, I was there when Natasha was interviewed, and she did an excellent job, and I just would like to welcome her. Took a little while to get her on board, but it's nice to have her here now. Thank you.
If you could bring that summer weather back too, we'd appreciate that. Still under county resident comments and concerns, if there's anyone else. Last chance. Go ahead and close the county resident comments and concerns portion of the agenda. It's gonna move us right along to tab B, which is the consent agenda, very busy consent agenda. You can tell we had three weeks between the last meeting and today. So the first item is the approval of the April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty five meeting minutes. The second is the approval of the county vouchers, warrants, expenditure approval listing, and the commissioners report. Third is the approval of the two, or the May sixth, two thousand and twenty five abates and rebates. Fourth is a request to ratify and approve the grant offer for the Airport Improvement Program project at the Southwest Wyoming Regional Airport. Fifth is a request to ratify and approve the grant offer for Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act at the Southwest Wyoming Regional Airport through the Airport Terminal Program Grant. Sixth is a request to ratify and approve the Congressional Delegation Appreciation Letter for the Southwest Wyoming Regional Airport in respect to both of those grants. Seventh is a request to restaff a vacant position in the facility's custodial department. Eight is a request to restaff a vacant position in facilities maintenance department. Nine is a request to restaff a vacant position in the Veteran Service Office for Sublet County. Ten is a request to restaff two vacant positions in the Sheriff's Office. Eleven, a request to restaff a vacant position in the County Coroner's Office. Twelve is a request for the approval of an at-wheel employment contract for the shared position within the county attorney and sheriff's offices. And lastly, thirteen is a request to approve resolution twenty five zero five C C O two, a resolution authorizing additional compensatory time, compensatory time for the Sheriff's Office employees who recruit successful applicants for law enforcement positions. With that, commissioners, I would ask if there's any requests to remove any of those items off of the consent agenda. If not, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Jones. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Richards. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Richards.
I just, I just want to make the comment of how appreciative I am for the work that Airport Director Brewbaker put into securing us those grants. That was a whirlwind. It was a scary few months of what I understand were a hundred and sixty eight grants out there for like, like projects. Two of those grants were funded, and both of those grants were for Rock Springs Airport. That's a testament to the work that, that he and our congressional delegation put into securing those for us. Just wanted to say thank you, Devin.
Yeah, well said. I believe if I understood it too, those were discretionary. So in the event that they didn't come through and, you know, the funding partners had to step in, that that wouldn't have been reimbursable?
In the last week, Mr. Chairman, there was a, there was a ruling that in the last legislative session, there was a one or two-word tweak made to the, the, the funding bill that they found that week that would have allowed us to pursue money that had been scheduled but not expended, which was different from the previous year. Still questionable, still not perfect, but, but if we just started scheduling work over the next couple of weeks, we think we could have had it funded through this grant, but we had to receive the grant in the first place. And again, we were two of the hundred and sixty eight out there. We were the only ones that have been awarded so far.
Yeah, job well done. It's a, hopefully gets us to the finish line on that project and puts it all behind us for the better. So nice work to Devon. Any other discussion on the consent agenda? Not, we do have a motion and second on the table. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed nay. Motion's unanimous. Next on the agenda is Commissioner Comments. It looks like Commissioner Slaughter, you get the pleasure of buying lunch today.
Absolutely. Glad to do it, Mr. Chairman. Seems like it's been a long time ago, looking back at some of these notes here, but on the sixteenth of April, I participated in mock interviews for Climb Wyoming. We conducted simulated job interviews for six women that will be graduating, or actually, I should say, I, there were eight women who were actually involved. But six that will be graduating from Climb Wyoming. The interviews were designed to help prepare graduates as they make applications to employers and to simulate real-life job interviews. The students were very well-prepared and agreed the simulation was a great benefit to them. Really enjoyed doing that. It was kind of eye-opening and to see what those young, young women go through and how prepared they are once they have the opportunity to get out in the workforce. Later that day, I attended the Green River Chamber of Commerce Awards Luncheon. Local business leaders and businesses were recognized for outstanding service to the local business community. It was great to see the accomplishments of many local businesses and volunteers. On the seventeenth, I attended the regular monthly meeting of the Coalition of Local Governments. Danielle reported that Rocky Mountain Power has done the final release on its IRP. The final request will be at ten point two percent. Thirty-eight new parcels were released for oil and gas leasing for the third quarter. Ninety-eight parcels will be released for the fourth quarter. Several of these will be in Sweetwater County. Danielle will follow up with numbers and maps of where those locations are. Later that evening, I joined all of you for coffee with commissioners sponsored by the Rock Springs Chamber and held at the Bison Room of the Sweetwater County Events Complex. Rick Lee of the Chamber posed several questions and solicited further questions from the audience. It was a good exercise, and although it was not very well-attended, I think the people who were there found it informative. On the twenty-first, I spent the morning in my office working on email and correspondence. I then met with Grants Coordinator Christina Marshall on issues she felt were important that may need to come to the attention of the Board of County Commissioners. We discussed several items included, including opioid settlement funds and the possibility we may need to, a funds and needs assessment to help direct us in the most advantageous uses of the opioid funding. We also discussed the concept of forming a working group to assist in this endeavor. Further discussion will be critical to help determine best practices moving forward. That evening, I met with Sweetwater County Museum Board for their regular monthly meeting. Their discussion centered around the funding requests that will be presented to the Board of County Commissioners for the fiscal twenty-six budget. They also discussed several upcoming events that the museum will be sponsoring in upcoming weeks. The History Fair will be taking place the week, weekend of May nineteenth, and the two-hundredth anniversary celebration of the first rendezvous will be held on July twelfth. Later that week, I met with Accounting Specialist Rebecca Romero to discuss the preliminary information for the fiscal year twenty-six budget. I met with Scott Kitchener, Chief of Fire District Number One, to discuss issues we will be talking about further later today. I conducted the first meeting for a working group to discuss outdoor recreation and shooting sports in the county. Topics included the trap club, shooting, and archery ranges. Subsequently, I met with Treasurer Cowan and members of We So Dash to discuss tax ramifications of their acquisition of Genesis Alkali. I met with Alan Adams, Eric Bingham, and Gene Legursky. Friday morning, I conducted the Federal Partners Meeting, which was attended by only three of you, along with BLM representatives of the Lander, Rollins, and Rock Springs field offices. On Saturday, I attended the Green River Burning of the Invoice for their Skyline Trail. The event was very well-attended. The Searle Brothers Construction Company agreed to burn the invoices for all of the work that they had done in doing that trail for the Green River Green Belt and the Skyline Trail. So huge accolades to Searle Brothers and also to Dustin Schillcox, who was really instrumental in, in bringing that project to fruition. Yesterday, I spent the day following up on items for the Congressional Tour, evaluating scholarship applications, and preparing for this meeting. And that, Mr. Chairman, I would stand for any questions.
Thanks, Commissioner. Appreciate the report. Happy to get together with you on the opioid as well. I know it.
Yeah.
Working with Christine a little bit on that, and we're trying to get further information. I think she's got a lot of that, so we just need to kind of put our finger on it and get moving. So happy to help out in that regard. Questions or comments for Commissioner Slaughter's report? If not, you're getting off easy today, Commissioner. It looks like Commissioner Toman, the floor is yours.
Okay, I'll turn it out to be all day. Happy Mother's Day this weekend. Don't forget your moms. Just a reminder, April sixteenth, I attend the Fontanelle Working Group phone call. The Green River outflow spiked to eighteen hundred CFS this last few days, but they will stabilize at a thousand for the summer. They were at eight hundred last summer and through the winter. It's near normal to slightly above-normal snow conditions. We came into the winter with below-normal soil moisture, expect above-normal temperatures for the next couple of months. April seventeenth, I attend the Coalition of Local Governments meeting via Zoom, and their two-page agenda, which Commissioner Slaughter covered some of the highlights. Went to coffee with the commissioners at the Bison Room at the Events Complex, and Commissioner West, I would like a copy of the fact sheet that you shared that night about county employment. If you could share that, that was very valuable information.
Be happy to.
About how many employees the county hires and how much we've lost through attrition, and it was great. Thank you very much for that. The Library Board meeting, I was not able to attend, but I did review their notes. The board advertised for public comment and code of conduct, code of conduct for the libraries. They reviewed the construction projects. On April twenty-third, I attended via Zoom the Bureau of Land Management Resource Advisory Council. I represent county commissioners for the state on that council, and my appointment is up for renewal this year. Two of us up this year and two up next year. The BLM has done one good thing. They rescinded the Council on Environmental Quality Rule, which Biden Administration was trying to amend. We had written a letter several meetings ago, maybe last meeting with our concerns. It was a coalition letter that we had sent to the BLM. District and Field Managers from the High Desert District, the High Plains District, and the Wind River Big Horn Basin districts provided updates on their projects, and I can share those reports with you. The Affordable Housing and Urban Interface are being looked at. Local offices are to identify lands for disposal. In mid-May, there will be an app tool that will be available to identify lands around cities of five thousand or more. Not sure that's going to help us much, because my memory of working on the Rock Springs Resource Management Plan, there were not too many lands available for disposal, so. And the ones they had, I'm not sure they'd be appropriate for urban housing. But anyway, they have been asked to coordinate and try to find available lands. We were reminded that the Rock Springs Resource Management Plan is in full force and effect since December twentieth. The Rock Springs Office did send options for amendments or re, revision to DC, actually for revoking it or rescission. No timelines and little information is coming back to them from headquarters. Wild horses will be gathered in July. All horses are to be off the checkerboard due to the consent decree of twenty twenty and the Wild Horse Amendment. On April twenty-fourth, along with Commissioner Jones, I attend the Sweetwater Communications Center Open House and Awards reception. It was very nice. Thank you. And then their meeting was on the twenty-eighth, and I called into that meeting. On the twenty-ninth, I attended Golden Hour Senior Center Board Meeting. They reviewed their financials and building improvement list, and thanks to Gene, they have worked with identifying needs for that building. There was discussion about sharing flyers about National Day of Prayer. Due to separation of church and state requirements in their grants, they didn't allow them to hand out flyers. Then later I learned, so I wasn't much help to them, that President Trump had, had an executive order declaring National Day of Prayer. So my apologies to Golden Hour. I did not realize that. There will be a murder mystery dinner with the high school theater department on May twenty eighth. So if you want some entertainment, Golden Hour will be having a murder mystery dinner on May twenty eighth. May first was National Day of Prayer. May first, I attend a local emergency management planning meeting at the Sheriff's Training Center. They updated their bylaws. Local officers are to be appointed by the commissioners upon their recommendation, and I'm not sure where that is. I don't recall having appointed anyone to local emergency management, but it's in their bylaws, so maybe I'll talk to John about that. They did their bylaws. I'll send them over to you. There was a special hazardous spill coordination presentation by Katie Miller of Wyoming Department of Environmental Quality. Upcoming pivot is aging out, so I'm not sure where that's gonna, where that's gonna go. Maybe it'll all be subdivided for homes by then. Then I also attend the Sweetwater County Conservation District meeting. May second, the Federal Partners Meeting, I joined via Zoom. BLM is in the process of reorganizing staff with some centralized processes. Jacklau Wind EA should be out late August. Wild Horse gathers will begin July fifteenth in Salt Wells and Rock Springs portion of Adobe Town. Rock Springs RMP, this will be repetition. Legal options have been sent to DC. They're waiting to hear from the secretary, but the cooperators or local governments have not been engaged or consulted at all for over two years. And when I questioned them about that, they said, well, the process hasn't started up again, so we didn't need to consult you. These were only legal issues, which I don't agree with. Lander Field Office reported that some seasonals have been hired for fire and range management. Atlantic City Campgrounds will be open later this month. A camp post is in place. In the Range Department, nine land health evaluations have been completed with three more to be done this session. Tim Navatney of the Rollins Field Office reported that the Rollins portion of Adobe Town Wild Horse gathers will reduce the herd from one thousand two hundred eighty-four to the low AML of two hundred and fifty-nine. The new D-two transmission line from Sweetwater County to Shirley Basin will parallel the Gateway West Quarter. This is green energy quarter. And then on Sunday, I took a tour out to Borstusk, the Hooten Ranch, the Kirkston Ranch, through the Sands, Steamboat Mountain, tried territory marker and made the big loop all the way back to Farson over eighty miles. Very enlightening. All through the RMP meetings, they saw there's no oil and gas. There were gas lines, pipelines, and, and gas wells all over around Borstusk. I mean, for the Jackmell Hills area, they, you know, they've declared that off limits. It was, it's good to just go out through the country and check out things, just to see for yourself what really is where. Upcoming May seventh, FFA Awards at Green River High School. May fourteenth, Bitter Creek Working Group Advisory Group at Western Wyoming College at ten AM in Rock Springs. May twenty-second, the Coalition of Local Governments. May nineteenth, the Wyoming Landscape Conservation Initiative Executive Committee meets in Cheyenne. I may do that by Zoom. I'm not sure. May nineteenth, that same day, the Library Board meets at six o'clock at Rock Springs Library. May twentieth, lunch with the commissioners. And last Saturday, I attended the Music on the Green with the Green River High School students, and my niece was in the choir, so that was very the Expedition Island, the building was full of parents and students, and it was a four-hour concert, three-hour, two hours, three hour. Very great. We have great students and great teachers, so thank you for that, all of you. That concludes my report.
Very good. Thanks, Commissioner. Any questions for Commissioner Toman's report? If not, Commissioner Richards, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, commissioners. On the sixteenth, I attended the Airport Board Meeting, followed by a Housing Task Force Meeting and a meeting with HR Director Gary McLean. On the seventeenth, I attended an Air Quality Advisory Board Meeting. Interesting piece of information from that meeting is that all monitored air particulates in the nation that are measured, on average, are within approved standards and most, most well within those standards and trending in the right direction. So America has really good air quality. Hear, hear different things in the press sometimes, but, but everything is going, going the right direction in air quality. Later that evening, I attended coffee with the commissioners at the Sweetwater Events Complex hosted by the Rock Springs Chamber of Commerce. First, I want to thank Rick Lee and everyone from the chamber for giving us the opportunity to have a meaningful engagement with the public. Well, we always welcome folks to come here to our meetings and talk to us and to contact us individually. It's always great to have events in neutral sites where people can feel comfortable speaking up and talking to us. I also want to thank Representative Brady for attending. I still think there's some confusion about the budget numbers circulating, but at least now we know where you're getting the information from. I, I still don't think it's accurate, but at least we know, know where it's, where it's, we have a conversation with her or anybody else. Speaking of which, I searched my email, text messages, voice messages, and I have no record of you leaving a message. Always open. Please reach out anytime. As always, anytime anyone wants to get accurate budget numbers, we are happy to provide that information. And in fact, it's right on our website. I know it's popular these days to say that the county needs dozed, but all of our budget information is right there to look at. I know it can be confusing though, so please, please ask and feel free to ask for any, any information. On the twenty-third, I had to go to Sheridan for the day to pick up a rifle for the local Republican Party's annual fundraiser. And because of that, I missed a special meeting of the Airport Board as well as a workshop and the regular meeting of the Southwest Counseling Board. I'll be meeting with Chairman Logan later this week to catch up with her on what happened at those meetings. On the twenty-eighth, I attended an SEDC Advisory Board Meeting. On May first and second, I attended the Wyoming Outdoor Recreation Summit in Laramie for a couple of days of panels and presentations. It was by far the best of the three summits I've been to, and I picked up some great information and ideas that I hope can be of benefit to Sweetwater County. I also remotely attended the first Friday's Federal Partners Meeting on the second. Thank you, Commissioner Slaughter, for hosting that day. Going forward, it looks like I have a Housing Task Force meeting tomorrow. My visit with Chairman Logan, followed by an SEDC meeting on Thursday. Then on Friday, I plan, I plan to attend a Congressional Tour Planning Meeting with Commissioner Slaughter next week, along with at least a couple of you. I tend to plans, I plan to attend the Spring Meeting of the Wyoming County Commissioners Association in Lander, which brings me to one final point I want to make. This weekend, the Wyoming Republican Party adopted a resolution basically branding the WCCA and all county officer-member organizations as socialist. As socialists and calling on the legislature to ban us from being allowed to join them. We've talked about this before because one of our local representatives ran a bill during that last session to the same effect. Um, I just want to say the WCCA provides us with the tools and information necessary to do our jobs. To the best of our abilities and on behalf of the constituents we represent you. Yes, lobbying the Wyoming Legislature is part of that. Small part, but a very important part. In a lot of ways, lobbying is a dirty word, but it really boils, boils down to providing information. It is vitally important that when the legislature contemplates bills that can have profound effects on Sweetwater County. That they have every bit of information possible so they can make good decisions. That means information from every segment of society. Including local governments. For the legislature to do their jobs correctly, they can't operate in a vacuum, separated from the people in political subdivisions and they hold power over. Having people representing county governments in Cheyenne, always available to talk to a legislator. Or testify in a committee is invaluable to the people of Sweetwater County. But that is, like I said, just a small part of what being a member of an organization like the WCCA does for Sweetwater County. I mentioned the Congressional Tour Planning Meeting that Commissioner Slaughter and I will attend this week. That is planned and facilitated by the Wyoming County Commissioners Association. And it's something that would never happen without our membership. For those of you watching or listening that don't know, the Congressional Tour is an opportunity to host bipartisan senior level congressional staffers. For an in-person visit to our community. Why is that important? Because for all the power that Congress has over us, most of them have never been here. These congressional tours make it so when a congressman is about to vote on something as important as say. A bill to nullify the Rock Springs Resource Management Plan. Their senior advisors can sit in a room with them and say, you know what? I was there in Sweetwater County. I know exactly. Why the Sweetwater County Commissioners believe the way they do. The WCCA provides NEPA training to its commissioners. They staff a federal natural resource specialist available to every member county in the state. And during our fight with the BLM, they stepped in and took up some of the slack. They coordinate positions on land use plans throughout the state, including the all encompassing plans like the BLM sage grouse plan. They provide us with invaluable information such as revenue, the Revenue Investors Estimating Manual, right there. That they provide member counties every year. Our legislators aren't compiling this information and providing it to us, but we have it at our fingertips because of the WCCA. Through the WCCA, we get monthly live reports for most of our federal delegation. Senator Barasa always calls in personally, and we also get regular updates from the governor's office. When we have our quarterly WCCA meetings, we get to interface directly with all of them. As well as directors of multiple state agencies that all have profound effects on Sweetwater County. Our membership in the WCCA also provides us membership in NACO, the National Association of Counties. It's through NACO that Commissioner Tillman was able to go to Washington DC and meet with 10 separate federal agencies. As well as visit our delegation where they work. NACO is who year after year lobbies Congress on behalf of public land counties like ours. To make sure we aren't forgotten about, forgotten about. So we continue to receive payments in lieu of taxes. For the 70% or so of federal lands within our borders. As well as the millions of ARPA pill money that Sweetwater County has received. That's millions and millions of dollars back into Sweetwater County. Because of the membership organizations we belong to. When you're elected leaders, join professional organizations. We don't do it to waste your money. It's not a scam. They're just tools that we use to do a better job for you. I think that's all I have for you today, Mr. Chairman. I'm happy to stand for any questions.
Thanks, Commissioner. Appreciate your report. Any questions or comments for Commissioner Richards? If not, Mr. Jones, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, 16th was a busy day. Started off, I attended the Memorial Hospital Sweetwater County Quality Committee Meeting. Uh, good news, MHSC received word they will remain a four out of five star rated hospital. Uh, this rating compares, uh, the hospital to all hospitals across the nation. And the national average is a three star. So ours, uh, for a few years is rated above the national average. So. Good news for all of us who might happen to step foot in there. Uh, also on the 16th, attended the Joint Powers Telecom Board Meeting. Uh, pretty much normal business was conducted. Again, on the 16th, I attended a court security meeting. That was my first meeting for this group. So it was interesting to attend and. And try and get up to speed on, on, uh, their conversations. On the 16th, again, I attended the Sweetwater GOP meeting. Uh, those were always fun and interesting. On the 17th, uh, attended the, uh, meeting regarding the BLM RMP. Uh, also on the 17th, attended coffee with Commissioners along with all of you. Uh, same comments, appreciate Rick Lee and the questions that were put together and certainly appreciate folks who did, uh, show up. For those who didn't attend, I issued a challenge that everyone there next time should bring a friend. I like to have more people attend, more people listen, more, uh, people become informed on what we do and. Why we do it and how we do it. Um, I also wanted to point out that Representative Brady was there. So thank you, uh, for attending. Certainly wish more of our freshman legislators would attend and, and become informed on what goes on in the county and, and why and how. Um, I've reached out to a couple of them in the past with little to no response. So. Uh, would be good to have them, have them show up and have some face-to-face conversations with us. Uh, since, uh, other than face-to-face seems to be limited at best. Uh, on the 23rd, I attended the National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, uh, the Years of Service Ceremony with Commissioner Tillman. Uh, congratulations to all the folks who earned awards. Appreciate all you do. Uh, on the 30th, attended the Board of Health Meeting. Also on the 30th, I attended the Memorial Hospital Sweetwater County Finance and Audit Committee Meeting. They did approve a purchase agreement, uh, on the Mako orthopedic robot. Uh, that changes it from a lease to a purchase and that will have to go in front of the full board for approval, but. Uh, they, uh, leased it for the first year to see how it worked, see if it was a good investment. And, uh, was, so they decided to actually purchase it. It's about $625,000. Uh, but the purchase agreement actually comes with a new and updated robot. So. Uh, sounds like all good news there. Those, uh, those robots are pretty amazing. They did also report they're starting to receive some payments from Medicare from several months ago. So that should help the bottom line. Also on the 30th, drove to Laramie to, uh, attend the Wyoming Outdoor Recreation Summit, uh, along with Commissioner Richards, as he mentioned. Uh, the summit was two days. It was on the first and the second. The goal of the summit is to bring as many different types of users to one place in order to discuss recreation. Build partnerships and access resources. Uh, we attended a number of panel discussions and breakout sessions regarding items such as. Corner crossings, which was a really interesting discussion. Uh, dual sport trails, uh, industry leader issues, grants, avalanche partnerships. Uh, recreation manufacturing and recreation partnerships working with the legislature was also a topic. Um, local economies and just partnerships in general. Uh, I too attended the federal partners meeting, uh, then that's been pretty well covered. So won't go into that. Uh, just to tag on to Commissioner Richards' comments about the WCCA, uh. The, the, the association, I think it's important to know, the association is made up, the Wyoming Commission. Association is, commission, commission association is made up of county commissioners. Uh, so we decide what needs to be lobbied and we meet to discuss why. The WCCA does not just run off willy-nilly and do whatever they feel like on that particular day. Um, so associations are not socials. They're very valuable in helping us do a better job for our constituents. The people, which is who we are here for is the people. Now, last note, Happy Mother's Day to my mother, stepmother and wife, as well as all mothers out there.
Thanks, Commissioner. Any questions for Commissioner Jones's report? If not, looks like I'm playing caboose today. Um, after our meeting on the 15th, Commissioner Jones and I met with Rebecca and John to go over some of the different budget accounts. Particular to component units and outside agencies and to gain a better understanding of what is contractually or statutorily required and what is not. As we continue diving into the budgeting process. Later that afternoon, I had a meeting at the sheriff's office to discuss some potential concerns with animal control and the partnership with the city of Rock Springs. There's an MOU from 2011 with rate agreements dating back that far. That originally started out as a discussion to increase those rates. And since then has seemed to have morphed into asking the county to help with funding additional, uh, daily use rates and maintenance and what have you. So. Further conversations will need to be had there, but Sheriff Grossnickel wanted to bounce a few dot, a few ideas off of us to evaluate some options moving forward. On the 17th, Eric, John, Commissioner Jones and I, as well as Ryan Rust from the city of Green River. Met with representatives from Senator Lemus's office to discuss the RMP. Uh, nothing new really from what you haven't heard already. But there was a brief discussion about the potential of a future national BLM director possibly being a candidate from Wyoming. So. They couldn't elaborate on that, but, uh, potential good news there. And it's nice to have communications with our national delegation and for each of them. And their staff to reach out and keep us informed of potential legislation specific to, in our case, the RMP, which at times can be timely. Like the reason for the amended agenda this morning. Um, later that evening, we obviously had the coffee with the commissioners event that the chamber put on at the events complexes walk-in cooler. Better known as the Bison Room. I thanked Candy later on for keeping it cooled down in there in preparation for all the hot air coming from the five in the front.
Hey, speak for yourself.
It was a good opportunity for the public to attend and ask questions. And I thank those who braved the storm to hear what the different needs and wishes are within their county government. On the 22nd, I had my monthly liaison meetings for Young at Heart and the Events Complex. Young at Heart continues to have concerns with budget cuts and the unknowns of the future of federal funding. They had a town hall later that week, which I was unable to attend. Uh, they're currently evaluating different programs and trying to prepare for what changes may need to take place once budgets are approved. One example is their in-home health services they provide. Currently they have 14 Green River clients. So they intend to have some conversations with Golden Hour to inquire about their capabilities in that particular scenario. They also appointed Janet Tanner to the board to fill the open position due to the unfortunate passing of board member Phil Ann Lux. The Events Complex had some exciting news to share. Airstream is looking to come back in 2027. After the positive feedback and experience they had when they were here last, I think it was in. 23, I want to say. Crew's been busy working on some custom lighting outside next to the exhibit hall there in the courtyard area. It will change colors during different venues. Or events like weddings or the Fourth of July or what have you. Uh, the ponds have been stocked with trout and bluegill for the summer season. I know a few of us been. Asked in regards to that, with some of the complaints that came through last year. Uh, the Spicer Pavilion shutters or the windbreaks are supposed to be here next week. So crews will be installing those. And they're looking to partner with the city of Rock Springs this year for the Fourth of July. Some different ideas being thrown around there, um, potentially with a concert at the pavilion and fireworks. Um, perhaps in the grandstands area. Nothing concrete there, but some good collaboration for the benefit of the community. And lastly, to put on your radar, the governor has agreed to be in attendance for the National High School Finals Rodeo on July 16th. The Public Works Report, Gene shared with us all yesterday and sent some pictures of. Construction progress on a few of the different projects we have throughout the county. So I'll read from that. And the Buildings. Department, we had our pre-construction kickoff meeting, April 22nd for the C Street Library Project. The Sweetwater County Library in Green River is finished with demolition and the contractor is starting to put things back together. The White Mountain Library Contractor is still working on submittals and minor demolition. The Southwest Counseling Jonah Modular and Waschiki facilities are progressing very well. The Southwest Counseling Duran Facility is progressing well and everything is starting to fit back into place. The Southwest Counseling, uh, Ankeny Facility had an owner contractor architect walk through on April 23rd. The contractor turned over one half of the building to the Southwest Counseling and is now working on the demolition and renovation in the other half of the building. Sweetwater County Combined Facility is progressing well. Building E is, and is receiving interior paint, ceiling grid and final electrical. The exterior concrete is progressing on both buildings. Building F. The CMU walls are complete and the electrician is starting to rough in all of the electrical. All of the offices have been framed and the electrical rough in is complete. The carport and tire storage areas have their concrete footings poured and steel will start up, uh, going later this week. The exterior is starting to take shape with the garage doors in place and the framing complete for the translucent panels. The Detention Center Rooftop Unit Air Handler Unit Project, uh, Duct Cleaning Subcontractor is complete. And we are waiting delivery of the first batch of rooftop units. Which should be on site around the middle of June. A new safety window was installed in the court security area up at the Green River Courthouse just above us here. Staff has fabricated the new drop chute and will work on placing the drop box and the new chute in the window over the next couple of weeks. Crews installed the new bathroom partitions at Crossroads, at Crossroads Park. Uh, they will move over to Reliance Park and complete the same partitions once they arrive. Maintenance crew handled 64 work order requests in April. Road and Bridge, now that the frost is out of the ground, crews have been starting to patch asphalt and blading roads. McKinnon Road, County Road One and north of Rock Springs have been their major areas of focus. We had a contractor patch some major areas on Exxon Plant Road, County Road 86 and Google White, Guken White Mountain Road, County Road 69 that had blown apart over the winter. Contractor crack sealed and patched the Justice Center parking lots. This is in preparation to seal and restripe these lots later this summer. This preventative maintenance helps seal the water out of the subgrade and also adds life to the asphalt by preventing UV ray degradation. Crews have also excavated out a couple of large soft areas that developed in the old Little America Road, County Road Two. And used GeoGrid and Separation Fabric to bridge the clay before putting the road back together. Down in engineering, the paint striping contractor will start working on the annual paint striping contract today. Um, pending the snow, they are hoping to complete everything in four to six weeks. Contractor on the County Road 15, Nine Mile Road Reconstruction Project. Started stripping the top soil of the, on the project last week so they could get all of their control points and slope staking completed. This project will kick off in earnest once Bridger is done with their turnaround. Staff is working on the final design and specification of the culvert lining project for Farson Second North, County Road 101. This process is cheaper than replacing the 96 inch culvert and will result in essentially new culverts with the same structural strict, strength. Parks and Recreation crews are out in all the parks, cleaning up after the winter, prepping fields, washing structures down and getting ready for the busy summer season. Other than that, spent quite a bit of time on the hospital resolution, keeping up with all the airport back and forth that we just got done ratifying and sorting through budgets. Uh, next week is the spring meetings for the WCCA kicking off with a board meeting in Dubois on Wednesday. I'll be in attendance for, followed by the spring retreat meetings, Thursday and Friday in Lander. So busy season has officially commenced. And with that, I'm done caboozing. Let's stand for any questions. All right. It's going to move us right along to tab C, which is the action and presentation items. A bit ahead of schedule. I'm a little bit surprised after being off three weeks. I figured those reports would be. 30 minutes each. Um, so the first. Action item before you is what we amended this morning, the letter of support for. Congresswoman Hagaman's office in regards to the RMP. My news director Bingham is with us this morning to explain. Good morning, Eric.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for amending the agenda. I was notified on Friday night. Saturday morning from Harriet Hagaman's office. To write, have a letter of support provided for a reconciliation report. Um, concurrent resolution on the budget for, this is federal fiscal year 2025. And in there, when you look in that document on that report, there's a subsection or subtitle C. Which states a prohibition of the implementation of the Rock Springs Field Office Wyoming Resource Management Plan. So. This is what this is, is a step in the direction of legislation. To put for a bill, put forth a bill that will, um, nullify the Rock Springs Resource Management Plan. So in this letter, we're stating our support for that. Uh, stating all the things that we've stated before, many times in the last year and a half. Uh, as far as the issues, uh, you know, the things we brought up in the protest report. That were disregarded by the Bureau of Land Management. And then the other thing is, is our recurrent resource management plan, if we discussed in the last few months, is in conflict with President Trump's executive orders. And also with, uh, the Secretary of Interior Doug Burgum's, uh, secretarial orders. Which are to reduce barriers to development, increase public land leasing opportunities. And to align BLM management with national energy poll priorities. So that's really it. I appreciate this going on the agenda. Uh, we need this obvious, uh, if you approve, sign so that I can get it to their office before twelve noon, uh, twelve o'clock today. So that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Just appreciate your support.
Thanks, Eric. Appreciate you putting that together, especially over the weekend. It's getting to the point. I mean, don't get me wrong, it's good. This is all good communication, but like see above, we've, we've submitted so many of these letters that they're kind of redundant, but yeah, I think everyone's kind of working their own angle and
Yeah.
the more the better as far as we're concerned. So thanks for putting that together. Questions, comments, commissioners?
Good job. Thank you.
Appreciate all you do.
Yep, thank you.
With that, I'd entertain a motion to approve the letter of support for Congresswoman Hagman in regards to the potential legislation for the RMP as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Jones, do we have a second?
I would second that.
Second by Commissioner Toman, any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose nay. Motion's unanimous. Looks like we got a break here in just a bit, Eric. We'll get that signed and down to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it. Thank you, Commissioner.
That's gonna move us right along to the original item number one under tab C, which is the disposition of descendants property order. We've got the Sweetwater County Coroner Dale Mahonovich with us online, as well as the Clerk of District Court Donnelly Bobak with us this morning. And we are a little bit ahead of schedule, but good morning to you both.
Good morning.
This is new for me. The only one I've heard about has been sitting in Lincoln County for twenty years with Ken Roberts. Um, but it's about a decedent's property and the current statute reads that um the coroner Mr. Mahonovich, and he's done his due diligence. Um, but if he can't get a hold of the next of kin for some property, it comes to the Clerk of District Court's office for a disposition. And um I've spoken with John and uh we've prepared this order for the commission, the chairman to sign. Um, do you want me to read the order or I, like I said, this is new for me. I've never done this before.
Yeah, no, no problem. But we have it here in front of us. Um, seems pretty straightforward and um. It's unfortunate, but I guess there's a process in place for circumstances like this when they come about.
And I guess the order doesn't specifically say where the money goes. Um, but I would imagine it would go for funeral expenses that the county pays and then to unclaimed property. I did take the liberty of they amended this uh statute at this legislative session. And I, I took the liberty to make a copy for um all of you. And it does uh state in there that any money would um go to the county treasurer for the burial and then anything left over would go to unclaimed property. Um, would you guys like this copy to have?
Anything you'd like to add, Mr. Mahonovich?
Well, I think uh Don, I covered it all. This is the first time I've done this and probably the second time I've done it in fifty years. Doesn't happen too often.
Any questions on the order for disposition, commissioners?
Um, I guess I would have a question as to um, who would be in charge of getting that money to unclaimed property? Would the money just go to the treasurer to go to the burial? And then they would take care of getting it to unclaimed property or would that be something you would want to direct my office to do?
Mr. Chairman. Treasurer's in the back of the room shaking his head yes.
Like that's the plan.
Okay, cool beans. I think my work is done.
Alright, any other questions, comments? If not, I entertain a motion to approve the disposition of the descendants property order and allow the chairman to sign as presented. Motion by Commissioner Richards, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Slaughter, any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose nay. Motion's unanimous. Thank you both.
The message is get your affairs in order so we don't have to deal with you.
Okay, next up is item number two. Under tab C, which is the Granicus Contract Renewal Proposal. As you might recall, we postponed this a while back to get some further clarification on the renewals. I believe we have Clerk Lane with us as well as Mr. Knight. Good morning to you both.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. Do you want to present? Alright, I was not here for the original where we postponed it. Um, however, I've been working with Tim and he has done most of the legwork on this. Um, speaking back and forth with Granicus, um trying to get a, a better offer than the original one that they had proposed. Um, during that process, we did secure a one-year five percent increase um so that we can have some time to look into other programs to see if there's something out there that provides what Granicus does, because right now it is working for us. Um, everything is there, but we just need a little more time to find out if there's something out there that's better, that can provide both the board appointment sections and also the um commissioner meeting section as well. So before you is that contract. Do you want to add me?
Wasn't, when we postponed it, I know it was a three-year deal, but wasn't it like a ten percent increase? Okay, so they've taken it down to five?
Yes. So, so in our, in the agreement that was originally signed, it had a built-in ten percent a year increase. We told them that was way too much. Um, I asked them to give us maybe three years with only one increase of five percent and, but they, they want to do five percent every year. Um, so I think it's worth looking at other options, but there's no way we can get anything done
Sure.
in the time this has to happen. So um a one-year agreement at this point and kind of look around, see if this is still going to be what we want moving forward, I think is a good option.
Okay. Questions or comments on the proposal, commissioners?
Chairman.
Mr. Richards.
It was me who said, no, this isn't going to work. So thank you for your due diligence following up on it and getting, getting a better offer. Um, I, I think this is much, much more workable. Ten, ten percent a year over three years was, was ridiculous and I'm I'm glad they're willing to compromise and, and uh, and now we have a little bit of runway to see if there's something better. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree. Thanks for looking into that and I know it's your favorite, Tim, so maybe it's a good time to look for other options too. It works good when it works, but as with all technology, there's always some difficulties with that. Any other discussion? Not an entertain a motion to approve the renewal proposal with the Granicus as presented.
So the chairman, um and have the chairman sign.
Oops, and authorize the chairman to sign.
Still moved.
Motion by Commissioner Richards, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones, any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose nay. Motion's unanimous. Thank you both. Appreciate it. Next item is a break, commissioners. We are about twenty-three minutes ahead of schedules. Why don't we resume back here at ten-ten? And we will start with the National Economic Development Week. Take about thirteen minute break. See you at ten-ten.
Good, thank you. All this meeting back to order, we left off item number four, which is National Economic Development Week. And with us today is economic development specialist Kayla McDonald. Good morning.
Good morning Chairman and Commissioners. On behalf of the Sweetwater Economic Development Coalition, I'd like to thank you for your continued support. And especially honoring Economic Development Week. This is something that we do annually with the two cities in the county, so I would like to thank you for doing that. And recognizing the hard work that economic development does here in our county. Just a quick little update, we are looking at a transition into a 501(c)(6). And that is something that SEDC is going to strive to do for our future funding. And so stay tuned for that and we will be keeping you updated as we go along. And I'll just stand for any questions before you do the proclamation.
Very good, thanks Kayla. Questions or comments Commissioners? Quite a bunch this morning, gotta get them back in the swing of things here. We do have a proclamation, National Economic Development Week, May 12th through the 16th, 2025. And it reads, whereas more than 100,000 economic development related professionals worldwide. Are committed to creating, retaining and expanding top tier opportunities that facilitate long-term equitable community growth. And whereas the economic development profession cultivates thriving neighborhoods, champions sustainability and resiliency. Boosts economic prosperity, enhances the quality of life and builds robust tax bases. And whereas economic development professionals operate throughout diverse economic environments, including rural, suburban. And urban settings, local, state, provincial and national governments, public, private partnerships. Chambers of commerce, institutions of higher education, among many similar organizations and associations. And whereas economic development professionals serve as stewards, bridging connections between community stakeholders such as residents, business leaders, elected officials, industry executives. And educational administrations to collaborate in promoting job creation, community investment. Infrastructure advancements and an optimistic future. And whereas economic developers contribute to the betterment and progress of Sweetwater within the state of Wyoming. Whereas since 1926, the International Economic Development Council. Has been a leader and driving force in advancing economic development initiatives with a steadfast commitment. To fostering growth and prosperity in communities of all sizes worldwide through equity, inclusion, sustainability, resilience and innovation. And now therefore be resolved, the Sweetwater County Wyoming recognizes Economic Development. Development Week and reminds individuals of the importance of this community celebration, which supports expanding opportunities, bettering lives and moving society forward. And I would entertain a motion to approve accordingly.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Richards, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones, any discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay. Motion's unanimous. Should we do a picture?
Let's check.
Alright.
I know, really don't. Well, I didn't want to call you out Taylor, but since you said something.
Moving right along under tab C's, item number five, we've got the fire contract agreement between Fire District One and Sweetwater County. Joining us this morning is Alan Adams and Scott Kitchener.
Good morning to both. Good mornings Chairman, Commissioners, so I'm gonna start this off. I've attached the new MOU, updated MOU between the county and Fire District One. The only thing lacking are the fees, which Scott would like to discuss and so we can formalize and finalize the MOUs.
Morning Chief.
Morning Chairman, Commissioners, how are you doing today?
Good, you?
Better if I wasn't here, right?
We didn't say that.
Okay, so I sent this information over to Alan several months ago. And we've just been kind of talking, I had a couple meetings with Commissioner Slaughter, productive meetings by the way. And the first thing I'd like to talk about was the contract rates per call. For the calls, it's this sheet right here, you guys have any things there? After doing, we did a review the last couple of years of calls that we had. And after reviewing the expenses that we had, the paying firefighters, the fuel, because some of these calls are forty, fifty miles. You know, outside of town, we gotta go outside of town for you guys' calls, so it could be eighty to hundred mile round trips, so the fuel costs are kind of high. After reviewing, we had nineteen billable calls last year, those are just called, that doesn't include the wildland calls that the seasonals go out on. Those are just the calls that we can bill, that we bill you guys up for the contract, so. Once we did all that, we figured out the fuel costs and all that. It was really close to us losing money on certain calls and some, some we broke even and some we made a little bit. So with everything the way the things are going this year with the, last year we lost money in our, in our budget because of valuation and all that. And same thing's probably gonna happen this year, we just felt that we needed to make sure that we weren't gonna be. At that fine line where we might possibly lose money on it, so. And in order to stay with working with you guys and keeping our costs down as much as we could. We just determined that if we could just increase every one of those categories by a hundred dollars. And we would see how that worked out for the next year or so, and just go like that, just a minimal raise per call is what we decided to go with there, so. Like I said, I don't know what else you might want to know, just so you know, I mean, to toot my horn a little bit, we are the lowest. Cost to you guys from the other agencies, our fees are about half of what their other ones are, so we're kind of a little there. So that's really the only thing, we're just trying to make sure we're either breaking even or just making just a little bit of money on top is all we're doing there, so. The other one would be the, I don't know if you have any questions on that or comments on that?
One quick question Scott, so each tier has been increased by a hundred dollars?
Yes, the ones you see right now have all been increased by a hundred dollars, like tier one used to be eight hundred, now we like say a hundred dollars, now it's gonna be nine hundred. Additional units be five hundred, used to be four hundred, twelve hundred, now it's thirteen, so yeah, these are the new numbers right here, so.
Okay, other questions on this particular? Go ahead.
Okay, now the other one we wanted to talk about was the seasonal, for the seasonal firefighters. Now this is something that we absolutely make no money whatsoever, this is just a pass through thing for you guys, so. What we currently have is there's this one right here that shows the twenty-four, twenty-two-four season, it shows the hourly rate, this is what we are currently paying the firefighters right now. Well, last year, what we paid them last year. And then we gave you guys a couple different options, option one, option two, there just kind of shows what, just what we. Put together in our heads, the reason why we're seeking an increase for these positions is that we're finding it hard to be able to keep kids. That want to stay with us, because as soon as they find out that they can go make six, seven, eight dollars an hour more. With like the BLM or the Forest Service, they usually end up leaving. The kids that we have had that come back last few years are people that are on our agency, our people that live at home, so they don't have the expenses so they can do it. But it's been very difficult to compete with other agencies. Like there's one here for Crook County, they're paying their guys twenty-six dollars an hour, where we're paying twenty dollars an hour. For firefighter type one, they're paying twenty-eight, where we're paying, where we're paying twenty-one something. And their engine bosses, they're paying thirty-one dollars an hour, we're only paying twenty-five. Now, I'm not saying we need to pay those high rates like that, but it would be nice if we could bump this pay up a little bit for these guys. Be a little more competitive, maybe hopefully get better, more qualified people, people that would want to maybe stay back with us and keep coming back year after year. We've come in under budget every year, the prices you see down here at the bottom of the pages, those are the worst case scenarios that we have. We figure out, we plan out eight hundred hours per firefighter, and that's what we do is the worst case scenario. We have not gone, the last, every year since we've done this, we've not got close to that, we've actually, like I said, we came in under budget every single year, so that's been a good savings there as we've done that, so. I really don't know what else, I mean, do you have any questions or anything, I'm just. That I can maybe try to explain more, justify more as to why we're seeking this increase, it's really like say just to try to get more competitive and get better quality people.
So that was my first question, I think you kind of answered it already, but obviously, you know, we've all been. Beating up the property tax cut that took place in the legislature, and so I wasn't sure if some of this is coming, you know, from that, but it sounds like this is more competitive.
It is, and like, yeah, and like I said, sorry to interrupt you, but like you said, we don't make any money off the seasonal thing at all. And what we benefit is the kids are there and they can do things for us when we take them out, train things like that. But as far as, it's really just a pass through thing, if the payroll cost is thirty-five thousand dollars that month. That's what we charge you guys is a thirty-five thousand, and we pay the FICA on them, we pay the workers comp on them, all that, so it is a, you know, it's a loaded hourly rate that we charge you, it's different than what the, than what we, we pay the kids, so. And we do that just to cover those costs, but I mean, we really don't, like say, this is not a money-making thing at all for us, so it's not us looking for more money, it's really not, so.
So how many additional staff have you had to hire since coming on board with county, I mean, obviously?
We do eight people every summer.
Okay.
Last year, because of this.
Just for Sweetwater County though, or is that for your?
No, that's just, that's just for Sweetwater County, yep, yep, we can't afford to do a seasonal program. We used to do that, but because of, with the money that we lost last, we lost a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars last year with our budget. Because of valuation and that, we're looking to, maybe, I don't know what we're gonna lose this year, but we can't afford to do that, we used to hire two. But then like say, because of the, we just can't do it anymore. So every summer for the county, we hire eight seasonals, last year we only did six because we couldn't find two people to fill those positions. And we just opened those positions up when, when our guys would want to come in and cover and work for them, our guys came in and did that, so we, we filled them periodically throughout the summer. But it was hard, it's getting harder to find people that want to come back and do this, once they find out they can go make six or eight dollars an hour more doing the same job. You know, so. I mean, everything is like I, like I told Commissioner Slaughter, everything's good with, the program's going good, we have good equipment that the county provided, great equipment, we take care of it. And we have good training, we have good commands, you know, leadership form, the program is good, we just need to be able to, to be able to pay them a little bit more. And like I say, I'm not saying we need to jump at six or eight dollars an hour. If we could give them a little bump this year, and then like what I talked, what we talked about with Commissioner Slaughter. Is that we don't really have any way to give these kids raises as we go through the year, and I hate coming in here and begging you guys like we are now. But if we could do something to like every year, or whenever you guys give county employees a raise, if you give the county employees a three percent raise. If we could raise this pay three percent, and that would keep building that up to where we don't have to keep coming back and doing this. So that was something that we talked about in that meeting that we both thought was pretty productive also, so. And I know it's a bad time of year to come ask this, but the kids are gonna be starting the last week in May. So that's another reason why we've been kind of wanting to push this a little bit too, so.
So explain your different options here, you've got two options. Obviously, one's less than the other, what's, is that simply based off hourly rate or?
One option, the one option was based off of just a dollar, just dollar, dollar rate. Like, you know, we went from twenty dollars to twenty-two dollars, we just, we just raised them up, it's just a per dollar, you know, a couple dollar an hour raise type thing. The other one was based off of percentages, and the proposal's based on percentages, using the firefighter two as the base rate, the twenty-four dollars was the base rate. And then we just added anywhere from seven to a twenty-four percent increase. For the positions based off of their qualifications and the certifications that they have to have. I don't know if that makes any sense or not, but.
Yeah.
Ones, one's just basically a dollar, you know, a dollar raise, the other one's a percentage type raise. And like I say, we just threw these out there to just give you some thoughts, some ideas and, and.
Commissioner Slaughter?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, in the discussions that Scott and I had. He presented these two options, we had very good discussions, and really, his point is just simply, you know, he would like to see. Good faith from us basically in trying to help these seasonal employees see. That there is hope that they can receive additional income throughout the course of their service if they come back from year to year. So the concept of potentially doing an MOU that we would tie. Their increases to whatever a cost of living increase that we were going to give it, the county came up, seemed like that might be a good way to do this in the future. I think what Scott is asking for is extremely reasonable at this point in time, that we've had really good discussions. So I think in looking at what his proposal is, you know, certainly understandable in the market that he's in. Trying to retain employees, that what he's asking for is extremely reasonable.
And we do everything we can to keep the costs down too, as far as the hours, because they are rated for, we are basing it off eight hundred hours. And the only time we allow these, these firefighters, when they're working over shift, is if they're actually out on a fire. We don't hold them over for certain things or anything like that, the only time they're, they are making, going into overtime, whatever you want to call that. Is if they're actually out there on the fire line doing work, so we try to. Keep that cost down, try to stay under that eight hundred hours, and so far it's worked out good, so. We actually give the kids some extra days off, things like that too, if things are slow, that are, that are non-paid days, you know, we actually give them some days off to try to keep that. Down too, because there are days when they, they have to work six, seven, eight days in a row, and it might be nice to have two or three days off, you know, so we kind of work with them that way too, so, just to try to keep the costs down, so.
So help me understand, because. You're saying eight seasonals for the county, but obviously, they're not just fighting county issues, right? It's part of your district as well, so are they going on those calls, in which case then if we're paying. The entire fee, or how does that work, because you're only charging us whatever hours they work on county fires?
Yeah.
Issues, and then if they're doing stuff for the district that comes out of your guys' fund, how does that?
We don't, we don't utilize them for that.
They don't go on any other calls?
Only if we, only if we request mutually, if we request them out, we need additional units, then we will request them to come out on our fires, as part of the MOU, we can do that.
Okay.
As far as the MOU, but yeah, we don't, they don't go out first response on our fires. So they're, it's usually if we call for help or whatever.
Okay.
And they'll go out with us.
Okay.
Yeah.
For some reason, I was thinking it was kind of a shared employment deal or?
You know, no, no, it's all paid through the county, yep.
Okay.
And they go anywhere, I mean, it's not just our, they can come over to Green, or they go to Wamsett, or they're county, they're county, countywide resource, they can go to anywhere, I mean, we could send them into Utah or Colorado if we need down that, that stretch of the area where there's nothing. You know, so they, they can go anywhere. Anywhere, I mean, we, we can send them into, into Utah or Colorado if we need down that, that stretch of the area where there's nothing, you know, so they, they, they can go anywhere, so.
On the mutual aid side of things, yeah.
Well, i- any, any fire, like if Green River has a fire in the county area, I mean, we can send them over to that too, you know, if, if Green River requests us, if they need them. You know, so it's basically what we do, we do, we just manage the program, we're just the ones that were crazy enough to say, yeah, we can, we can manage this for you guys. Um, but they're available to go anywhere in the county, and we keep them in the county because we don't, we don't want to get in the business of sending them to. All around the state, things like that, because we want to keep those resources here available.
Mr. Chairman, I was just gonna try to answer that, but I think Scott did, um, when we eliminated the county fire department, we saved a lot of money. Um, but there were trade-offs, um, but it, it didn't abdicate us of our responsibility to provide some mutual aid. Uh, services to our partner agencies and our neighbors, and this is a way to continue to do that. We're still paying for them for us, um, but they are an asset that we can use to share with other communities who are sharing their assets with ours. When we need them also, because we still have the abe- uh, ability to, to call on those very same neighbors to provide that same mutual aid to us.
Yeah, they, they, they never go up just on one of our fires, they may go up with one of our engines. Um, but we never just send them, okay, you guys go take care of this, you know, we, we never do that, um, so. Sometimes it's hard not to, because it's, they're right there.
Additional comments, questions?
So, they're, they're full-time employees though, but they're just dealing with county type fires, so what are they doing when there is no county fire?
We have them training, we have them doing different, doing different activities, going around checking fire hydrants and, you know, cleaning up fire hydrants around the area, we've had them out in West Side Water District. Doing things out there, um, out north of town, uh, we had them working with the water district out there doing stuff, so we find things. Fire-related type of things for them to do. Work with the BLM a lot, we've had them go out and do some things with the BLM and stuff, and, and, uh, go out and patrol the area, they check the, uh, dry hydrant system we have. And the, and the fire system we have out of there, out at the Sweeney Canyon, Arrowhead Springs and that, and so we, we, we try to keep them as busy as we can.
Additional comments or questions? So it looks like in the agreement, the term is indefinite, is the way I read it, um.
Where, where do you see that at? Because we had that conversation, and we seen where it said it was June of twenty twenty-four where it expired.
So on page five, it says this agreement shall come into effect upon signing by the parties and shall remain in force. Unless terminated earlier in accordance with section ten, blah, blah, blah.
If we did see that, that was the next topic I was gonna talk about, was just we need to redo the.
And then it gives a ninety-day divorce clause, we call it.
What page is that on, five you said?
Five.
Section.
Very top of.
Very top.
Section two, two point oh one.
And then the very bottom of eleven.
Wait, this, this is the new one, right? Correct, yeah, okay. Yeah, I think the old one, we're considered as twenty twenty-four thing, so.
So, just so I can make sure we're on the same page here, we've got, obviously the renewal of the agreement. Also subject to your proposal of increasing your seasonal rates, along with your.
And the call rates.
Contract rates.
Yeah.
Does everyone understand that? Kind of three requests and one, I mean, the, the agreement covers it all, but it's subject to. The attachments, if I'm understanding it correctly. Any discussion on that? Okay. Well. I would entertain a motion to approve the fire protection agreement between the Board of County Commissioners of Sweetwater County. And Sweetwater County Fire Protection District number one. To include the two thousand twenty-five new contract rates request, along with. The option one, loaded hourly cost of employment estimates for the twenty twenty-five season as presented and discussed.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Do you have a motion by Commissioner Slaughter, I believe I heard a second by Commissioner Richards, any further discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay, motion's unanimous.
Thank you, I appreciate it very much, uh, hopefully this will help. Program, um, any other questions about the program or anything, I mean, like I say, it's, it's going really well for us, um. It, it's the last three years now, or whatever we've had it, so it's, um. Working with, uh, the county shop, getting the trucks in, things like that needed done, this has been great too, they've been great to work with, so. We, we don't have any complaints at all on our end, so, if you guys have any questions or concerns on your end.
No, go ahead, Mr. Commissioner Richards.
I just want to say thank you for your department's willingness to work with us and other. Tax penalties around the county, there's a lot of places in sort of kind of just simply would not have fire protection without you being willing to work with everybody, so.
Appreciate it, appreciate you guys, thank you.
We took a lot of heat for dismantling our fire department, but it seems that everyone's a lot happier.
Well, it's, it's working out, it, it is, it's, you know, it's.
We're saving considerable amount of money. So just so you don't get it up there where we were losing.
Oh, we're, 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 it's, we're not the, we're not, we're not the ones you have to worry about, so.
No, we, we appreciate it Scott, we obviously don't hear a whole lot, we hear it throughout Allen, and it seems like the partnership's going well, we had some changes there. With the new position, but, you know, any of these discussions I think are. I'm told there was some, uh, some difficulty in getting to this point, and so we don't want to see that, we value the partnership, and. If we need to improve those communication lines, let's do it so that we don't go.
Alan's been great, you know, Alan's been great to work with and that, and, you know, our new liaison, uh, with, uh, Commissioner Slaughter, we've had some good conversations with him, and. So yeah, it's, it's no complaints from us, so.
Very good, thanks for coming over.
Right, thank you.
Appreciate it. And next commissioners under tab C is item number six. We've got the two thousand twenty-five Wyoming State Forestry Division District Four Annual Operating Plan, and we'll hand it back to Fire Ward and Adams.
So just, um, in case anyone doesn't know, so. The district, this, this AOP is between the state forestry and basically every county in western Wyoming. So, so it's covering wildfires, uh, throughout the, throughout this district, so that's what District Four is. So this plan was written in twenty twenty-two, and it is updated every five years, however, this year's annual meeting. Uh, March in Kimmer, there were some, uh, basically the, the objectives, none of the objectives have changed, it was just the wording, some of the. Websites, um, have changed, and so it was just updated, the, the, those wordings, the, uh. Updates for the websites of, and because of the, there's a word change, then it was brought up in the meeting that. The sig, it has to be signed, um, per the agreement, so that's all, I'm just seeking, um, for your approval and signature, and then I will. Disperse it throughout the rest of the county and get everyone else's signature on that and return to the State Forestry Division.
Very good, any questions on the annual operating plan, commissioners? Sounds like some minor language updates.
Yes, sir.
Not an entertain a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-five Wyoming State Forestry Division District Four Annual Operating Plan as presented.
Mr. Chairman.
I believe thought and authorized the chairman to sign too, sorry about that.
Oh, I'd make the motion and authorize you to sign.
Thanks Commissioner, we have a motion by Commissioner Tomlin, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Richards, I think I heard, any discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay, motion's unanimous. Appreciate it. Moving right along to item number seven, we've got a memorandum of understanding with Daggett County for State Line Road, Browns Park Road and McKinnon Road. And with us to present this is Director of Public Works, Gene Legursky, morning Gene.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, uh, commissioners, what you have before you is an MOU that we, we've been working with, with Daggett County, um. As you know, Sweetwater County's huge, and we have roads all over the place. Um, Daggett County has in the past helped us out, plow some roads that we just can't get to, uh, McKinnon Road, County Road one is paved. Um, until you get to the junction there, and then it's dirt from there into Utah, so, uh. Usually what we try to do is send a plow down there, but then you need a blade on the dirt road, and it just gets, gets sometimes unmanageable. Um, so they approached us during our meeting with Ashley Forrest this year about maybe doing a cost share on some stuff, um, State Line Road. Excuse me, if you know where State Line Road is, uh, you take a right, uh, right after the hub, and it goes right down the state line. Um, basically, the whole entire roadway. Top sits, um, in U- in, uh, Utah, Baggett County, however, the shoulder in the ditch sits in Wyoming. I mean, it's one of those weird roads, um, it accesses, uh, Washum Road, it accesses Cedar Cliff Estates. Um, so it's used by a lot of residents down there, we currently mag, um, Washum Road, and we currently mag Cedar Cliff Estates. Daggett County said, hey, we plow, we help you guys plow, uh, different stuff during the winter time. So is there a way that you could mag State Line Road from the highway to about, uh, point one miles past Cedar Cliff Estates? What we would do is buy, uh, use our contractor, whoever got the CMAC project and the dust control project. While we're down there in Washum, um, and Cedar Cliff Estates, we'd have them apply two loads of mag chloride to State Line Road. Daggett County would prep, blade, do all that stuff to get it ready, and then as we're down there, we would buy those two, we would, uh, purchase those two loads. Um, to the county, if we use this year's price, it'd be about seven thousand dollars. Um, just so you guys know, our total dust control CMAC projects is gonna be about seven hundred thousand dollars this year. So yeah, it is an increase, but it's a, it's, it's an insignificant increase, uh, the hard part about that is it's really. Hard to draw comparison, how many times are they gonna have to plow, uh, Browns Park, how many times are they gonna have to do, uh, you know, the other part of County Road one? Don't know, two years ago, we would have made money on it, this year probably not. Um, I think it's a good use of county funds to help them out, because they help us out, and it also. You know, I can't stress enough that there is people that live off of State Line Road that reside in Wyoming, um. And it would preserve that road for them, and I don't think it's that big of a, we can work it into our schedule, I don't really think it's that big of a problem, but.
Very good, appreciate that Gene, any questions or comments on the MOU?
So the seven thousand would come through the state money we get for CMAC anyway, or it would have?
It would come out of fuel tax.
Oh.
It'd come out of our fuel tax, um, thing, we cannot pay for the CMAC, um. We don't know where the CMAC program's going, uh, we were at, uh, training last week, Andy and I both were up in Chi- up in Casper. And the CMAC program is gonna get completely reworked this year, um, so we're waiting to see that, of course, we don't know until July first, when everything comes out exactly what it will be. Um, right now, with the total CMAC, we still pay about five hundred thousand dollars out of our funding for dust control all over the county. And we've been trying to whittle that down, trying to, this year, we're gonna alternate roads and try to do some other stuff, because that's a big hit. Um, but it will come out of the fuel tax money, just so you guys know, between Washum and Cedar Cliff Estates, we. Um, apply about two hundred and seventy-two tons down there, so this would be sixty extra tons down there in that area.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
If not, entertain a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with Daggett County for State Line Road, Browns Park Road and McKinnon Road. As presented and authorized the chairman to sign.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Slaughter, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Richards, any further discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay, motion's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thanks Gene. Moving right along, we've got item number eight, which is the presentation of the viewer report for Kelly Road. And with us today is Rob Gerard with Western AGI. And good morning, Rob.
Morning. All right, made it just in time.
Yeah, good timing.
Yeah, guys are ahead, so, um, yeah, I'm the viewer for the Kelly Road, Kelly Road is about a mile long. It is, uh, located north of Rock Springs, and it, uh, accesses off of Yellowstone, uh, Road. Um, it's a currently a dirt road, um, the road now is not in great, great shape. Um, there, it's not crowned, it doesn't drain off to the side of the road, it's more, it's almost inverted and. And drains towards the center of the road, there's a few spots in it where there's some low dips. Where water can be held in there, um, further deteriorating the road, um, there's no borrow ditches along it. And also the access roads off of it, they're culverts, um. Even the culvert's going to cross the road and the access roads, they're either silted in, um, crushed in, some of them I couldn't even see at all. Um, so they're in, in pretty bad shape as well, um. It is a dead-end road, and it's, um, as it only serves the properties along it. Um, and going through the records for it, there's, um. There's a lot of question on whether there is legal access for, um, some of the homeowners out there. Um, there's portions of where, where they may be able to drive on the north side of the road, but not on the south side of the road, so. In order to enter the property, you'd be driving on the wrong side of the road, um, in order to legally access your property. Um, it does get a little questionable in through there, um. Um, through the rapport, I, I did some, um, examples of roads that are nearby, there's, um. Some of them are private, some of them are public, um, and I just put those in there for comparison. Just to show how many, uh, properties are accessing off of those properties or off that, those roads. Um, and the reason I did that is, um, the applicant, um. Who wants Kelly Road to be public, um, she indicated that, that. All the roads out there are, are public except for that one, and so I just wanted to show. Um, the difference between those roads, and also there is some private roads out there as well, um. Talking to some of the property owners out there, um, most of them do not want it to be a, a public road, they are. Their opinion, they moved out there because it was a private road, and, and, um. And it was not a public road, and it was under their control and not, and not, uh, and not the county's control. Um, so I did put a price in there, um, whether it's the property owners there that pay it. Or if it's the county that pays it, but to construct that road, it's about four hundred and eighty thousand dollars to construct the road. Um, that doesn't include, um. Purchasing the right of way, um, with people not wanting it to be a, uh, public way. The county would then either have to purchase that property from them, um, by working something out, or you can do like eminent domain. Which means you're still gonna be paying for properties, and then there's also the fight of, of going that route as well. Um, so, I guess in short, my, my opinion is to not have Kelly Road be a public road. And that it should be maintained a private road, however. I would like to see the property owners out there, um, to work something out, to make sure that everybody does have access. Um, that all the utilities can go through there, people can access their properties, um, so I'm here for any questions.
Thanks Rob, appreciate the explanation there, I know that was a snippet of it, it was a two hundred and forty-four page report, but it was. It was interesting, it took me forever to read, but just the different land transfers and ownership issues and titling, and. That's a complex study you had on your hands there.
It, it is, and it's still very unclear too, so.
Yeah. No, we appreciate you agreeing to be the viewer on that, and doing your due diligence there, it's. It's amazing how some of that just gets overlooked and, um.
Mm-hmm.
And like you said, regardless of what we do, you know, if, if we don't move forward with it, then. It still hasn't solved the issue of who owns what, and what right of ways do or don't exist, so it's.
Yeah.
It's a complex one. Questions or comments on the viewer's report, commissioners? They're very quiet today, I'm getting concerned.
Want to move it along.
But I was, I mean, it was good to see that you met with all the, you know, respective owners out there, I know it, it typically, that's how these work, they get pushed by. You know, one individual interest or sometimes a group, and on this one, it seems like it's, you know, one particular family. Or owner out there wanting to push it through, and the rest don't want it, so that's even more complicated in that regard, but.
Yeah, I was a little surprised when I went out there. It was, it was my own assumptions, it was a bad assumption, but I kind of thought everybody along the road was all on board, and.
Yeah.
So I was out there, and I guess I didn't have permission from everybody, but. But yeah.
Very good, sounds like you're getting off pretty easy this morning, so. Very good. Sounds like you're getting off pretty easy this morning, so we appreciate you coming over and presenting the report.
All right, thank you.
Mister Chairman, though, I do have a question, though. So the resolution, John, we're just. Approving the resolution to have June ninth be the date we decide yes or no, right?
No.
Right, it sets the deadlines for objections.
Yeah, okay.
No, we'd be moving forward to approve, right? Yeah, so that was item number eight, which was just the presentations. No action on that. That was just a Q and A. Which then leads to item number nine, which is the resolution for notice of intent to establish the Kelly Road as a county road. And so I'll let Gene explain it, but essentially he's moving forward with. With Ross and Tor you kill it right now.
Yeah, so there's two options into this and learning from. Commissioner Richards, I tried to write this in the positive, so I think I got it right this time. So it's a little bit confusing. If you guys vote no on this resolution, it basically kills it right here as it stands. It will not become a county road. If you go on, then we go through the process, we notify the property owners, we send it to all interested parties. You guys take comments and do all of that stuff. We publish in the paper, post all that stuff, and then we have another hearing in the future. That's listed on here, and then we go forward and you guys can decide at that point. So it just depends on how you guys want to do it. Personally, you know, I read through Roger Port, did a great job. I have about seven of these roads in Sweetwater County that are just as ugly, just as bad. They come up every couple of years. As far as, hey, do we have access? We put in utilities. Try to get them straightened around. It's a nightmare. You know, it'd be really nice if the county could step in and then pull everybody together, but I don't think right now that it's the county's responsibility. And then upgrading the road, you know, to do that to meet county standards. As far as a transportation network road. If it gets extended into the BLM, yeah, this works out great because it ties in with Spangler and we can do some other development and everything like that. So I'm kind of conflicted on that. But reading the report and, and doing everything else. You know, I'll let you guys make the decision, but you know, either kill it now or we go through the public hearing process and, and go forward. And then you guys decide in the future what you guys want to do with it.
I have another question. Are there issues then if we kill it now? Are there issues? Somebody could challenge us because we didn't let it go through the whole process?
No, so and so just to clarify, so if, as Gene said, if you approve it. Then that sets the deadlines for objections, et cetera. If you go the other direction, then there, there's the process if somebody wanted to. So there's a process either direction for objections for whichever action the board takes.
One, one process is led by us, by the advertising and everything like that, and taking the other one is led by an outside party. If I, you know, say it correctly, and if they want to press it further, they can.
Questions or comments on the resolution?
Mister Chairman, just. For clarification, so the proper. Procedure here would be to move the resolution forward. Have this, have it seconded at that point in time, and at that point in time, have the full board decide up or down on it at that point.
Correct. Yep, so a vote and a nay would. Basically kill the resolution, would have the potential. To go through the appeal process, vote in. The I would move it forward with timeline and the notice of intent to go through the following steps. As if we wanted to establish it. Everyone on board?
Yep.
With that, I entertain a motion to approve. Hang on here, lost my spot. Resolution twenty-five oh five E N zero one. For the notice of intent to establish the Kelly Road as a county road as presented.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Slaughter. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Richards. Any discussion?
Mister Chairman.
Mister Richards.
I think the viewer report on this is. Pretty thorough, pretty clear. I don't think the property owners as a whole want this. It doesn't make financial sense for Sweetwater County, so I will be a no vote.
Yeah, I thought it was very well done and. I go into those not knowing, you know, none of us do all the data behind it, but I thought it pretty much painted the picture that. This one doesn't seem to make sense, so I too will be voting against it.
Same for me, same reasons. I concur, Mister Chairman.
Yes, same reasons. I will vote no.
Okay, any other discussion? If not, we do have a motion and a second on the table. All those in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion fails, five to zero. Thanks, Gene. Appreciate that. That's gonna move us right along and thanks again, Rob, for putting that together. To item number ten, which is the contract for professional services, professional services between Resolute and Sweetwater County. For the White Mountain Library HVAC replacement project, which is grant MRG dash two five zero one one. Got Gene with us as well as the Sweetwater County Library Director Lindsay Travis. Hand it back to you, Gene.
Thank you. What this is, it's just a contract for professional services, so they can. Start designing everything underneath the MRG grant that Lindsay and, and Christine have worked hard to get for us. This is for the White Mountain Library, the most used library per person in the, in the county system. And equated, when we went through it with Lindsay and their maintenance personnel. They've done a great job of babying that system for a very long time. So that's what it is. It was, it's interesting, if you look at the, the company name Resolute, I'll just clarify that. It's not a misspelling. It's actually a combination of two mechanical HVAC plumbing. Kind of firms that we've both used in the past. BBFA, Van Borre and Franken Associates, how it used to be known, has done the jail. They did the. Justice Center expansion. They've done stuff for us all the time. BNA, we've used one other time and I can't remember exactly what job, but they basically combined to make a. A big company is all they done. So we've used them in the past. We're familiar with Spencer and Dave and all of those guys over there, so. Don't let the name or the misspelling from an engineer let you, it's not a misspelling.
I had to question him on it because I thought I was wrong, but. Any questions, comments on the contract for professional services?
Well, yeah, you, you can't just go bid it out for HVAC system and have them do it. You've got to have all of the bids and everything figured out.
We have to have it designed. I mean, that's one of the things. I'm not a mechanical guy, so the, you know, when you do the airflow mass balance analysis and all the different things. And then you bring in the electrical guy to make sure that the service is correct. It's, it's above my head. I'll be completely honest with you. You know, you give me anything else, structure wise or road wise, I can do that, but this stuff is, I'm learning a ton. But there's a lot of intricacies in this, and especially when you step into new building codes and stuff like that. If you recall, we ran into this on the detention center. The detention center HVAC and everything was done in two thousand and three. Building code changed so much that we had to add a hand running to the parapet wall, stuff like that, that, you know, who would have known about unless you do this specifically for a living? And that's what these guys do.
Additional comments, questions? It's not an entertaining motion to approve the contract for professional services to Resolute for a not to exceed price of ninety-one thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars. For the design and construction period services for the White Mountain Library HVAC replacement grant MRG two five zero one one project. And allow the chairman to sign all necessary documents.
Mister Chairman.
Commissioner Tom.
I would make the motion.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Toman. We have a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Richards. Any discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose nay. Motion's unanimous. Thanks, Gene. Thanks, Lindsay. Tell them to get those prices down low.
Can we use the grant to pay for this or not? It will pay for this.
Well. It, it'll pay for a portion. We don't know where the prices are coming in and everything, so. But yes, we can use this to, the grant to pay for this.
It's gonna move us right along to item number eleven, which is the BLM right of way grant offer. For a portion of J Y Road, County Road eighty-eight, and we'll hand it back to Gene.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. This is something that we submitted to you guys back in January and you told me to go forward with this. Periodically, the county roads. On the checkerboard system, the BLM grants expire for some reason. When they've done them in the past, they've done it from twenty, twenty-five or thirty years. Don't know why. We've been working really hard to get them, to get them to us perpetually. It's hard to do because they're so used to dealing with private resource roads where if you extract it, you use the road and then they move on and they bond it back to, you know, reclaim it. I think we have a good enough working relationship with the realty people now that they actually trust that the Sweetwater County will be around for a long time. So they will give us a perpetual right of way, so we don't have to keep redoing these. You know, we have a whole slew of these on the checkerboard. We'll get through these and then. Hopefully nobody ever has to do it again. I don't know if you guys noticed in paragraphs two C of this, they did say that it was perpetual. They also had to throw in a date because they are the federal government. They couldn't just say perpetual, so. This instrument will terminate on December thirty-first, three thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine. I don't plan on being here. Hopefully you guys don't either. But they had to throw in a date, so that's where it's at.
Wild.
Yeah, I saw that.
It's out there a little bit in the future.
I've never seen that before.
No, me either.
That has to be a typo. No, that one wasn't either.
Don't worry, they'll lose the paper by then, so it won't matter.
Any questions on the BLM right of way grant offer? Not entertain a motion to approve the BLM right of way grant offer for a portion of J Y Road, County Road eighty-eight, and allow the chairman to sign all necessary documents.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Jones. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Toman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose nay. Motion's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gene. Appreciate it. About forty minutes ahead of schedule, which is a win. Gonna move us right along to item number twelve. We've got. GIS Contract Award joining us this morning is Sweetwater County Assessor Dave Devis. Who is thrilled to be moving forward with this, I assume.
Mister Chairman, that is exactly right. Thrilled is, is a good description. Just to refresh the, the board. We had lost our GIS coordinator in December, first part of January, something like that. So we've basically been in limbo at this point as far as getting our map server updated. I worked with Eric. And Marty quite a bit on this, on this proposal. Eric and I both decided to get. To go the contract route. We think this is probably a cheaper, more efficient way to do this service because it's not really full time for my office. There'll be times when it is full time, but most of the time it's, it's a parcel here or there, or it's working on a problem. Parcel, new subdivisions, those kinds of things that we see quite a bit. But going contract, I think we're gonna end up saving the county some considerable money. My budget did go up. I know we're talking later today. The two, I did add some money in there, but if you add Eric's allotment and my allotment together for this particular service. We're still much less expensive than we were before with a full-time employee. We did get. Ten RFQs when we sent that out. We advertised in the Green River Star on the thirteenth, the twentieth and the twenty-seventh of March. And we did select a four-person committee. It was Eric and then myself and then two of my staff to actually review. The proposals as they were submitted and we all had same scoring system and we all came up with the same winner. So we would like to award this contract to. William H. Smith and Associates for GIS services for the county. I did have. Mister De Leone look over the contract. He's satisfied with that as well. I got some additional like workers comp, that kind of stuff from. The vendor as well, so they're meeting all the requirements that we need and we would like to move forward with this.
Very good. Thanks, Dave. I saw in that letter, they still needed to supply some info to you. It sounds like you got all that, so it should be good. Questions on the. GIS Contract Ward Commissioners? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve William H. Smith and Associates Incorporated. The GIS Contract Award and allow the chairman to sign. Motion by Commissioner Richards. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones. Any discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose nay. Motion's unanimous. You're on your way.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
You bet.
Item number thirteen is resolution twenty-five dash zero five dash C C dash zero one. The Memorial Hospital of Sweetwater County One-Time Funding Agreement. If everyone's had a chance to review that, that was follow-up from our discussion at our last meeting in regards to. The obstetrics department. Couple of their. Room remodels and using like utilizing some of the funds that we had set aside for them, so. Open it up for any questions, discussions.
I've been through this enough, I would hope by now.
I'd like to think so. An entertaining motion to approve resolution twenty-five oh five C C oh one with Memorial Hospital, Sweetwater County. For the one-time funding agreement.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Jones. Do we have a second?
I will second that.
Second by Commissioner Toman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose nay.
Won't have to use the tent for the new babies.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. It moves right along to item number fourteen, which is the Daggett County Interstate Law Enforcement Mutual Aid Agreement. Joining us this morning is Under Sheriff Joe Tomich. And good morning, Joe.
Good morning, Mister Chairman and Commissioners. So before you this morning is Interstate Mutual Aid Agreement between Sweetwater County and Daggett County, Utah. This allows us to perform law enforcement duties within a limited scope in Daggett County, Utah and vice versa for. Daggett County Sheriff's Office to perform limited duties within Sweetwater County, Wyoming, so. Previously, this has been done as a handshake agreement, which is not the legal means to do this, so. There's a prescribed method by both Wyoming statute and Utah statute, so we're trying to get these agreements. On board and in the right order, so that if something does happen, that everybody's covered appropriately, so. This will cover from effect, the effective date of last signature on it through. No later than April twenty-ninth of twenty twenty-nine, at which point it would have to be renewed, so. The Daggett County Sheriff and the Daggett County Commission's already signed this. This would be looking for signature from the chairman of the board on this one. Once the chairman signed it and the sheriff has signed it, it will go to the Attorney General and then to the Governor's Office for. Signature and filing in accordance with Wyoming statute, so. With that, I would stand for any questions.
Very good. Thanks, Joe. Went from a handshake to all the way to the Governor's Office.
Right.
I love it. Questions or comments on the. Mutual Aid Agreement? Not an entertaining motion to approve the Daggett County Interstate Law Enforcement Mutual Aid Agreement and allow the chairman to sign. Motion by Commissioner Richards. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones. Any discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose nay. Motion's unanimous. Alright, thanks, Joe.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate it. That's gonna bring us to our last item on the regular business today, which is the two thousand twenty-five Sweetwater County Commissioner Scholarship Awards. Because these contain personal information for the applicants and students, we discuss and deliberate. This information in an executive session. So Commissioners, we are an hour ahead of time and we're gonna keep the foot on the pedal here. Since we have a budget workshop this afternoon, so. We have various items to discuss in executive session this morning. Personnel, pre-decisional and real estate. So at this time, I would announce that we will be taking action upon coming out. And I'd entertain a motion to enter into executive session.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Richards. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Slaughter. On favor, say aye. Aye, oppose nay. We're now an executive. We're now an executive.
Entertain a motion to come out of executive session and reconvene the meeting.
It's all moved.
Motion by Commissioner Jones, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Richards, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are out of executive, we do have a couple items we need to take action on. We are out of executive, we do have a couple items we need to take action on this afternoon now, I would hand it over to Commissioner Toman.
So you want the scholarship winners first or the previous scholarship winners first, right?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, on the Sweetwater County Scholarship winners. It was a very difficult choice, they're very high, highly qualified, so congratulations to our students. Okay, the three selected as finalists are Hadley Miller, Addison Demaree, and Lilly Harris. Congratulations. The alternates in order are number one Julie Bowen, alternate number two Bryce Chatterley, alternate number three Tacey Fox.
Very good, thanks Commissioner, entertain a motion to approve the Sweetwater County Commissioner Scholarship awards as presented.
I would make that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Toman, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones, any discussion? And then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose nay. Motion's unanimous, kind of a fun thing we get to do each year and certainly congratulations to all those students and thank them for applying, there was only eight this year, some years we've seen up to, I think close to 20, so definitely a very difficult decision, they were all very good applicants and we wish them well. Second order of business is I would entertain a motion to ratify the CLG comments for the Sweetwater Carbon Storage Hub CO2 Sequestration Environmental Assessment as discussed in executive session.
Mr. Chairman, I would make the motion to ratify those comments.
Got a motion by Commissioner Toman, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Slaughter, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay. Motion's unanimous.
Who seconded the scholarships?
Say that again.
Who did the second for the scholarships?
I did.
Commissioner Jones.
Okay, that's what I had, okay, thank you.
With that, that does conclude our regular business. To come before you today Commissioners, we will resume in a budget workshop later this afternoon at 2 o'clock, so without further business, this meeting stands adjourned.